Good morning and welcome to the Ballin County Commission Regular Meeting. This is a September 1st, 2020 meeting. I have asked the Sheriff if he would lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Ball.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you on this day, a day that we conduct business for the citizens of this great and county, great wonderful county that you have blessed all of us to live and to work in. And Lord, today we ask your blessings upon this county. We ask that you continue to lead and guide us in your ways. Lord, we particularly today pray for the people in South Louisiana. Lord, as they continue to deal with the devastation by Hurricane Laura in Caukashu Parish and in Cameron and all those adjoining communities. We pray for the men and women that have volunteered and left this county to go over there to assist and to help and those that will continue to keep going. Lord, we pray for our county commission. We ask that you give them wisdom and guidance in their governance. And in all that they do, we are thankful for our staff. We are thankful for all those that work with us every day to keep this county great. Lord, we pray for our country, our state, and once again for our region and county, that you would continue to be with all of us. We pray for the men and women, all of our first responders, all of those that work in our medical and healthcare facilities as we continue to also battle this pandemic. We pray for a quick relief and cure. We ask these things now in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The first item we have here on the agenda is to approve the adoption of minutes. We have four separate ones. So do I hear a motion to approve the August 13th, 2020 special meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we have August 18th, 2020 regular meeting. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Madam Chairman, on the 18th minutes, just want to note for the record, there was a correction to those minutes on August 18th.
Thank you very much. Correction noted. That is up at the top there in red on the agenda. All right. Next, we have August 21st, 2020 special meeting. We have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes, please.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Ball to approve the August 21st, 2020 special meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Next, we have August 23rd, 2020 emergency special meeting. Motion?
I'm making a motion where you accept this emergency meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Gruber, seconded by Commissioner Ball to accept the August 23rd, 2020 emergency special meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're going to jump down to the presentations because we have a few people that we need to get back to some other obligations. So, Mr. Dias, would you?
Madam Chairman, the presentations are regarding the ACCA. Give me one second to get to those. Madam Chairman, the staff recommendation is to present the presentation of the certificates in county administration to the following county employees for completion of education requirements as administered by the Alabama Local Government Training Institute with the ACCA. The first individual is Mrs. Kristi Davis.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, we weren't able to have the presentation down in Orange Beach this year, so we're having to do it here. Congratulations.
Thank you, sweetie. Speech?
No speech?
No speech. No comments?
I drove all the way to Prattville to get that for you.
I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to attend the class. I really didn't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, the next award winner is Mrs. Connie Dudgeon.
Thank you so much. Anybody want to say anything?
I appreciate the opportunity to attend and all of it's very informative.
Thank you, Connie. Thank you, Sheriff.
And the last award winner is Michaela Schaber.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to attend. It was very informative. So, never being in, you know, county government, it was a good experience.
Very good.
Thanks, Karen.
Well, thank you so much. And again, I want to say that these would normally have been presented at the annual convention that the Alabama County Commission Association has every year. And usually it's held in Orange Beach because everybody likes to come down here instead of us going somewhere else. But that wasn't possible with the pandemic going on. And so, these three persevered and finished their certificate programs. And we're very proud of you guys for doing that. I was talking with Joe just yesterday, and we were trying to get our county commission classes, and they keep canceling it on us. So maybe one day we'll learn how to be a county commissioner to a master degree level. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Next, we go back to Item B, which is the action items on the agenda. Item BA4 has been completely removed from our agenda, so it's not a part of our agenda. And then I want to note that there are three items that have replacements, or actually two items that have replacements. And then there's another item that is completely pulled, which is BQ7. So, BQ7 and BA4 are completely removed from the action items. And then we have two replacement items. Do we have a motion to approve the action items as noted?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the action items as presented to us.
And I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Gruber and a second by Commissioner Davis to approve the action items as noted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you very much. The, back down, I guess we're to the presentations again. We just did Item CA1. CA2 was a work session only item. And then, wait, no, no, no.
No, no, we was going.
We do need to make action on that, right?
Yeah, yes, Madam Chairman, I think we have a brief presentation by Mrs. Boudin.
Okay. Absolutely. All right, less than 24 hours, and I forgot. Y'all need a second to get ready? Why don't we skip this and come back? And we can do the...
We can do the Laker license.
Yeah, public hearings.
Public hearings. We have one public hearing. Is that okay with you guys? Okay. We will come back to the Item CA2, but we will move on to the public hearing.
Madam Chairman, the first public hearing, the only public hearing item is case number LV-20006. This is an alcohol license application for Swearingen &amp; Nolan Incorporated, doing business as Big Daddy's Grill. Staff recommendation is as follows. Consider the transfer application of O20 Restaurant Retail Liquor License from Big Daddy's Grill LLC, doing business as Big Daddy's Grill, to Swearingen &amp; Nolan Incorporated, doing business as Big Daddy's Grill, located at 16542 Ferry Road, Ferry Up Alabama, and approve the issuance of said license by the Alabama Alcohol Beverage Control Board, ABC Board, if the public hearing does not reveal a legitimate reason to deny the application.
Okay. Is there any questions before we open the public hearing from the commissioners?
No.
Hearing none? Okay. We will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on this case?
Madam Chairman, we do not.
Okay. There is no one signed up to speak on this case, but is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak that did not sign up to speak?
We have the applicant here, but he doesn't, you know.
Okay. All right. Hearing none, then we will close the public hearing.
Madam Chairman, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
All right, you got it.
You started.
Making a motion, we approve case LV-2006.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Ball, a seconded by Commissioner Gruber to approve case LV-20006. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And ayes have it. Are we ready yet? Okay, we'll go back to Item CA2. We have a presentation, and then I believe we've got to make a vote. Well, I thought we were ready. Excuse me. Technical difficulty.
Madam Chairman, I'm somewhat confident my phones are off.
For the record, Joe is very confident that his phone is turned off this time.
Somewhat confident.
I want to believe him.
It's not over with yet.
That's right. Time will tell.
I'm just glad he has a good sense of humor about it. Okay. Now we're really ready. All right. Okay. A little over a year ago, you all approved a branding and marketing strategic plan that JJPR completed, and they presented it yesterday at the work session. So I'm just going to run through really quick what they came up with. They, we interviewed citizens and employees and did some research on how people feel about living and working in Ballwin County and visiting Ballwin County. These are some of the results that came back. Nearly half of the people we interviewed have lived here more than 20 years, which was really neat. And a lot of, a lot of people lived here their whole lives that responded to this Some of the results that came back, people agreed that this is a great place to visit, a great place to raise a family, and a great place to live. And I think we would agree with that. And this is the brand that they came up with for us to use. The brand lives in concert with the seal. The seal remains, and the seal is still for official business. The brand is more for the public, visitors, people to build a relationship with the county. So this, these are the colors in the brand, and here are some ways that it can be used. There it is being used with the seal. Here it is on hats and cups, bags. And then wayfinding was something else we looked at. So, on our campuses, where we have courthouses and different services to help citizens, newcomers, find their way around, even people that have been here for a while who don't know where to go for services. So this will guide them. And again, it's that brand recognition. So it's the same throughout. These are some taglines that we have not decided on yet, but we will continue to look at and come up with a tagline to go with the brand. And that's it. Okay. All right. And so, we need to approve, go back to the brand.
Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay, so we, we need a motion to accept this branding.
I'll make the motion that we accept this branding concept moving forward.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Ball to accept this branding for the county. Any discussion before we vote?
Yesterday, when they were talking about the branding, you know, like the, I believe it was the webpage, and they had a recommended vendor in there for that. Can we legally just black out, or we have to, we're going to have to go out with RFP, aren't we?
This is not a part of that, to make sure that I'm understanding correctly.
This is a part of that.
This is just the...
Okay, okay. We'll get to that later.
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
That was just a recommendation, but it's good that you asked that because it was a part of the overall presentation. That was just a recommendation. What we're basically looking at today is the image of the fonts, and we haven't approved a tagline. We may not have a specific line. We may use several, but those were just some suggestions. And I think it's ultimately up to the commission to choose that tagline. Those were just suggestions. But what we're basically, I believe if I'm understanding this right, is approving those fonts and that image. And that the seal will remain, the colors, there's several variations of color we can use, and the seal will remain a part of our branding, but only on official documents. That's correct. The website, I'm working with CIS already on revamping our website.
And Madam Chairman, first of all, website goes, Brian and his folks are very talented at that, and I feel confident that they can handle those changes. I think it's one of those things you got to look at every now, evaluate every now and then, and just update it. And so I know in talking with Brian and having seen his staff do some other activities, they're very, very talented at that. I have no doubt they can do that.
Absolutely. And our people come first there. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any more, any more discussion before we vote? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you so much, Sherri Lee.
Thanks, Sherri.
Okay. If I hadn't gotten myself out of order, we already did Item D. Now we're down to E, which is finance. Finance chair is up.
All right. Madam Chairman, my recommendation is that we pay bills totaling $3,724,878.24, with the exception of vendor that commission requests to be pulled that are listed in the Ballwin County Accounts Payable section. Of this amount, $1,117,115.07 is payable to the Ballwin County Board of Education, and $65,737.92 is payable to the Gulf Shores Board of Education for their portion of the county sales and use tax. There is Item 78 in our listing that I would like to have that pulled if we could.
Madam Chairman, I second Commissioner Davis's motion with Item 78 being pulled.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we pay Item Number 78.
Second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Gruber to approve Item Number 78. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Davis has abstained from this vote.
Thank you.
Next was just a discussion item yesterday under...
Madam Chairman, we have the interim payments.
Oh.
Yeah.
Can't go without not making a mistake.
And just, and Madam Chairman, for the record, the next item is notification of interim payments approved by the clerk treasurer under county policy. Staff recommendation is to make the attached interim payments made by the clerk treasurer totaling $2,116,904.94, and make that part of the minutes.
Absolutely. Okay. F, items under F, the discussion items, I think all of those were just discussion, no action items. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then we have some addenda. Were...
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman, the first addendum was the proposed planning of District 34. As you may recall from the work session, Mr. Jackson presented that, that map. And so this starts the process for them to petition. So we're asking for approval, commission's approval of that map.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Item HA1.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we'll, we'll give it over here. Okay, Commissioner Ball made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Gruber. All those in favor signify by saying aye on HA1.
Aye.
Okay. Now we have the HA2.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, this is also pursuant to the work session discussion. This is moving the voting location in the Bell Forest area from the Bell Forest Community Center to the church, as we discussed, under an emergency warranty relocation. This is a request by the judge of probate. As you may recall, the Bell Forest Community Center has very little parking, very sometimes dangerous situation when people are parking on the road, walking to the polling location. This will move it to the church down the street, as we discussed, and would be a much better location with parking and handicap accessibility and those kind of things. So we're asking for approval of that relocation.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve that as presented by staff.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Ball to approve this new declaration of emergency warranting a relocation of voting place for precinct number 23, as stated by staff.
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Madam Chairman, if you could, I want the public to know, and we talked about it yesterday, making the move requires us doing some things to make sure it's handicap accessible, and we'll do whatever it takes to make that this time and then be in a... we'll do whatever it takes to make that this time, and then be in a position to have it in a more permanent setting.
Absolutely. This is an improvement for the voters' safety, and?
That's correct.
I believe the overall issue was safety. Okay?
Madam Chairman, the next item is just some personnel changes in HA4. We, commission, staff asks approval of those changes to the personnel in the planning department.
Wait, wait, HA3?
HA3 is just a discussion item.
That was just discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was just discussion. Okay, so now we have HA4. Do we have a motion to?
Submove, Madam Chairman, to approve HA4.
All right.
And I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Davis to accept the personnel change in HA4. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Then?
Madam Chairman, the last addendum is HA5. This is regarding prequalification of contractors for the construction of two new Baldwin County Highway Maintenance Buildings located in Baymanet and Silver Hill. Staff recommendation is as follows. Make Addendum Number 2, which includes one change, the prequalification of contractors for the construction of two new Baldwin County Highway Maintenance Buildings located in Baymanet and Silver Hill. Alabama, part of the September 1st to the 20th official record of the Baldwin County Commission.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion we approve item number HA5 as presented to us.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, do we have any administrative report?
No, ma'am, we do not, Madam Chairman.
None? County attorney?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chairman. We do have several.
Good morning. We do have several matters that we need to go into executive session for this morning, so we can do that at the end.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to make any comments before the commission? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone from the press? Commissioners? Commissioner Gruber?
No, just, you know, again, thanks staff for getting us where we're at today and getting this meeting prepared. There's a lot of work goes into getting this agenda, and I want to thank them for all the hard work they do. And CIS for, you know, for production, you know, of setting us up so that citizens can see what we're, business that we're conducting. And that's it.
Yes, I'd like part of my comments on the census from the get-go. Remember that we got through the month of September to complete the census. And I do want you, the public particularly, to communicate with us, with me, about any difficulties that you've had. I have been made aware of people that have already submitted their information early on. Still having people come to their house, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that there should be a data system where they only go to visit those that have not responded. So if you're having difficulty, reach out to us, and we'll try to be helpful, but it is vital that we make sure we get everyone counted, because so many dollars that will impact paradise will come as a result of the census and the accuracy of that. So I encourage everyone, though, if you haven't already done it, and many of you have, make sure you talk it up to your friends, your neighbors, your colleagues, your people in your Sunday School class, people you work with, because it is very important, and one of those things that can slip by. And what we want to make sure is there's so many reminders that we don't have anyone fall through the cracks. So let's get our census numbers in so Baldwin can be more than adequately represented. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, the only comment I wanted to make was just kind of like a overall assurance to some families in our community that are suffering from the loss of young lives due to accidents. It seems like we hear about one of these just about every weekend now, and I just wanted the community to know and these families to know that this commission is heartfelt. We're praying for y'all, and anything that we could do, we would do so. Just know that we're thinking about y'all and praying for y'all very hard, and that's all, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. I'll close this out before we go into executive session. I just want to say that this pandemic has gone on much longer than I think any of us would anticipate, and we needed to continue to reach out to our fellow neighbors, friends, and family and check on them. There's a lot of people that are, they're suffering from this, mostly, mostly their mental state, if anything else. They're, this is becoming, it's becoming the wrong type of norm for them, and I just want to encourage people to continue that. I have a mother in a nursing home, and it's very difficult that I have not been able to hold my mom's hand since the first part of March. It's very hard to see her through a Zoom meeting that we get to have very, I'm not asking for sympathy for me. I know there's a lot of people that are out there in the same situation, but because of her mental state, she doesn't understand how to use Zoom. So I know there are people out there that, but find a way to communicate with your folks if they're institutionalized. I stand outside the window and jump up and down and say, hey, mama, and those kinds of things. So I just wanted to encourage anybody that's in the same situation that I'm in to reach out to your loved ones and your friends. And there's some people that are in these institutions, they have no one. The lady that's in the room with my mom didn't even have any family that I'm aware of, and so I stand out there and wave and blow kisses at her. And I want to elaborate on a little bit that what Joe said, yes, the census is so important, and we're actually in a competition here in Baldwin County right now. I'm not so much worried about winning the money, but the schools will get the money. And so, if you trust someone to help you, do the census. If you are one of those people who don't use social media, you don't text, you don't do internet, I had a guy tell me the other day, I don't text, I don't do internet. I said, well, do you, do you trust me? And I know some of you watching say, well, you're a politician. Well, there's some people trust me, okay? And so, if you trust somebody enough, all you have to, and you don't do those things, let them help you. All they're going to ask you for is your date of birth, your address, and your nationality, and do you own your home. That's about it. I mean, they're not going to ask you your income level, they're not going to ask you your social security number or anything else like that, and the number of people that live in your house on April the 1st. So I would like to also throw out there that if there's anybody that watches this before the end of September, and if you trust me enough or my office enough, call me. I'll help you and walk you through it. My office number is 251-972-8515. And I will help walk you through it, and we will get you counted, because it's so vitally important. A lot of people don't understand what it's about, but we do stand to lose representation in Washington. We stand to lose money for our schools, healthcare, agriculture, everything. So each person that fails to get counted, we lose $1,600 worth of federal funds. That can add up to a lot of money. So enough of that soapbox, and do we need to?
Attorney needs to take us into?
Take us into executive session?
I think it's on now. Yes, I'm an attorney licensed to practice law in the state of Alabama. There is an exception to the Open Meeting Act that allows the commission to go into executive session to discuss with its attorney the legal ramifications and legal options for pending litigation. The planned discussion for today falls under that exception, and so I recommend that the commission make a motion to go into executive session.
And we'll adjourn from, we don't, we can adjourn?
Not reconvene. Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we accept our attorney's recommendation to go in executive session.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Davis to accept the county attorney's recommendation to go into executive session, and we will not reconvene after the executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We will not reconvene after the, I mean, we will convene after the, but we won't come back in here. Okay?
Madam Chairman, if we could note for the record that this meeting is concluding at nine o'clock.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. I appreciate that notation.